We'll have our invocation today from Pastor Jack Shannon of American Lutheran Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Councilman Lozelle.
Mayor Oberg and members of the City Council and citizens of Prescott, as long as I've got so many people wearing blue behind me, Prescott's finest. If you would indulge me, I'd like to offer up a special prayer just for them, and then a prayer for our meeting. Oh, good and gracious Lord, to give you thanks and praise for this day, and especially, Lord, I want to give you thanks for the men and women who have served us so faithfully under some very difficult circumstances at times, Lord. And just ask your blessing, your covering, your protection to be upon them and upon their families. May they feel the appreciation of our community, Lord, for the hard work that they do. And gracious Lord, we do lift up before you our prayers of praise and thanks. We thank you for blessing us this day, and for your steadfast love for us, and for all of your creation. We thank you for what a blessing it is to live and work and play in this beautiful city of Prescott. We thank you for the dedication of those who are here today, who endowed by their benevolent Creator, have gifts and talents, and a desire to serve this community with a passion for public service. So we just ask that you would give them a spirit of wisdom, of discernment in all matters that will come before them today. Give them a spirit of unity and purpose and patience in all of their deliberations. And may the thoughts and words that are shared today be covered with your spirit of humility and love. And the actions that are taken today, may they advance your holy will and your holy purpose for our community and for all of its citizens. To you be given all honor and glory, now and forever. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Oberg.
Here.
Mayor Bertam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Shiska.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
City Manager, do you have any announcements?
I do not, sir. I did want to give Mark an opportunity to talk about business licensure and how far along we are.
Okay. Can we need about five minutes for that, or?
Ten, fifteen, maybe. No, just a few minutes, sir. I just wanted to make an announcement, obviously, as of January 1st, that the business license, vacation rental license, and sober living licenses that council passed this year became effective. People can go online now and apply at our website at cityofprescott.net. If you get to the website, again, prescott-az.gov, sorry, I said that wrong. Along the right side, you'll see a business license button, right here. That takes you to the page that will get it to actually go there. Lot of important resources there, information about the transition to state collection, ability to apply for your licenses right here, a Q and A on the bottom of the page. A lot of good information is available on that website. Mailers are going out with utility bills this month. Mailers went out with the tax returns. We're doing direct mailing to various users groups that we know about, and working with the Chamber of Commerce and other places to get it in the newsletters. But as of today, we have about 342 people have applied. Considering we just started last week, we think that's a good start. So, again, please have, go out and see the website, get the information, and apply. Our phone number is on there if you need help getting through it, or have any questions, we'd be glad to help you.
And what's the deadline?
The initial deadline in the ordinance was January 31st of each year for the renewal and licensing, but of course, we're first year, we're pushing it out towards the end of February to give people enough time to get out and get these things done.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Mark, I have a question real quickly while we've got you there. I had a question this morning from a recipient of one of your letters, and the question was, you have a commercial building with multiple tenants, and it had to do with multiple fire inspections, one building fire inspection. While he understood full well that each business was going to have to pay a business license, he wasn't quite sure whether every business had to be fire inspected.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a good question. It's a question we are getting on the phones. It depends on a lot of factors. So if there is a question, please give us a call. We'd be glad to discuss that with you, and try to figure out if there needs to be multiple fire inspections. A lot of times, in one building, there are locked areas for each business, so there is a need for multiple fire inspections, but not always. So again, please, if that is a question, call, call the number on the website.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Orr.
Yes, Mark, I just wanted to recognize you and your Department of HME, too, for all the work that you've put in on this, and thank you for that. I've played around with the website, it's very good. I just, I just think you've done yeoman's work on this, and thank you.
Thank you.
And thank Lars and Jane and everybody else.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. We'll move on to proclamations.
Proclamation. We're claiming the week of January 23rd through the 28th, 2017, as Stand With Me, Be Drug Free Week. And I believe Mary Lee Fowler is here to accept.
No, she's not.
Oh.
It's Pat Mooney.
She's had three of us.
Okay.
Well, today, the city of Prescott is proclaiming Stand With Me, Be Drug Free Week, January 23rd through 28th of 2017. Whereas Matt Force has proclaimed January 23rd through 28th, 2017, to be Stand With Me, Be Drug Free Week. And whereas, the city of Prescott embraces a vision of a healthy, vibrant, and strong community for children, youth, families, and people of all ages, and whereas, most citizens are not involved in substance abuse, the city of Prescott recognizes that Stand With Me, Be Drug Free is an opportunity to acknowledge and celebrate these healthful citizens, and whereas, knowing that families are adversely affected by illegal drug use, including work problems, legal problems, mental health problems, physical illness, addiction, accidents, accidental death, economic loss, child abuse, destruction of families, thriving while impaired, and crimes against persons and property. And whereas, the city of Prescott would like to commend and pay tribute to all of its citizens who chose to be drug, who choose to be free of illegal drug use. And whereas, the city of Prescott would like to especially commend the youngest of our citizens for not using alcohol, as 85% of eighth grade students, 69% of 10th grade students, and 56% of 12th grade students do not use alcohol, for not using marijuana, as 91% of eighth grade students, 79% of 10th grade students, and 74% of 12th grade students do not use marijuana, and for not abusing prescription drugs, as 94% of eighth grade students, 94% of 10th grade students, and 95% of 12th grade students do not abuse prescription drugs. Now therefore, Harry Oberg, Mayor of the city of Prescott, does hereby proclaim January 23rd through 28th, 2017, to be Stand With Me, Be Drug Free Week, and encourages its citizens to participate in the celebration of a drug-free, healthy community by participating in the planned events, activities, and displays.
First of all, I want to thank the board for always supporting us, and I think most of you know what Matt Force does. For some of you out there that do not, Matt Force is 11 years old now, and we just got a snapshot of some of the things Matt Force did in the last three months, and I'm not going to read them all, but just to let you know that 5,962 students were educated on drug prevention in 73 school presentations. 3,043 people were educated on substance abuse at 37 speaker bureau events, and 6,400 community members were educated on the risk and harm of drugs and alcohol. So that's just an idea of what Matt Force is doing on a daily basis. We are all board members there, and so we are here to promote primarily the idea that our children don't understand a lot of times, that they are in the majority if they do not use drugs. So we'd like to have you know that and recognize that. And Leslie is also a board member.
Hi there. I am the board member and also the Assistant Director of your local health department. And, you know, one of the things that keeps me involved in Matt Force and keeps me motivated to keep working on these issues, is that it just seems like in our community, when you, we started with meth about 11 years ago, and that was a huge problem in our community. And we saw it as a public health epidemic. Our children were starting to use, our workforce was starting to use, our law enforcement was, it seemed like, you know, treading, trying to keep up with this epidemic. And Matt Force was able to come together with law enforcement, with community members, with our healthcare, our healthcare community, others involved, like Scott with juvenile probation and detention, and, and all of these others that we work with in Matt Force, and we were able to make a dent in the meth problem. That being said, it seems like on the tail of the meth problem, we start into other problems. So we've gone through issues of higher marijuana rates than the rest of the state. Right now, we're battling prescription drug problems and heroin addiction, and that seems to be a rising and incredibly scary public health epidemic. And so I just want to say thank you to all of you in the room. We have law enforcement here, and a lot of those of you sitting right back there have been involved in Matt Force in different capacities. Some of you in the room have been involved. We even have parents in the back who have lost children to drug abuse, and they hurt every day because we weren't able to prevent their children from using drugs. So I feel like it's a community issue, it's something we all need to be involved in, and this week, this proclamation, and this week that we are setting aside to celebrate those who don't use drugs, is a reminder for parents, for grandparents, for everyone here, that we can make a difference, but it's going to take everyone. And we need to celebrate those kids and those adults here that don't use drugs.
Here's Scott Mayberry.
Thank you. I'll be brief. My name is Scott Mayberry, and I'm the Director of Juvenile Court Services for Yavapai County. And we came up with this slogan at a heroin summit probably over a year ago, and the thinking was that in this day and age, especially in the field that I work in, and police, and some of the pushes that we're seeing in the media, is that everybody's doing drugs. And the fact of the matter is, is that everybody's not doing drugs. And we really wanted to get the message out there to the, especially our young people and adults, that you are in the majority of people that do not do drugs, and you don't have to feel like you're an outcast if you do not. In fact, you are the majority. So that's, that's the message behind this, and we can't thank the police officers and everybody enough, and the council members for recognizing this as well. So thank you all very much.
Good to see you.
Okay, we'll move on to presentations.
Item 8A, Presentation of a Unit Citation to Members of the Prescott Police Department, presented by Police Chief Black.
I'm going to speak from here, if that's okay. Mayor, Council, Mr. Lamar, I apologize for my voice, I'm a little under the weather, it seems to be going around. At this time, I would like to invite all of the dispatchers, police officers, and detectives up to stand in front of the dais, please. You're welcome to join them on this side either now, or when we actually present the certificates, your choice. They are more uncomfortable in this setting than they were the morning we're about to Aurora, Columbine, Charleston, Sandy Hook, Orlando, Tucson, and just last week, Fort Lauderdale, and so many others. Our first thought, when we hear this long list of cities, is not always about how great these communities are, but about the common tragedy they have all experienced, an active shooter in their churches, their schools, and in their shopping areas. For years, the potential of an active shooter incident is something public safety professionals have thought about, talked about, trained and equipped for, while we pray it never happens in our city. And due to a citizen who saw something and said something, and the immediate and effective response of the men and women standing before you today, it did not happen in Prescott. You've probably all heard the story through media accounts, but I'd like to read the citation because the details are important. On December 3rd, 2016, the Prescott Regional Communications Center received a 911 call from Walmart located at 3050 East State Route 69. The store manager reported that a current employee of the store had a conflict with her manager earlier that morning, and had returned with a rifle. Prescott Regional Communications Center dispatches, dispatchers attempted to gather information from the store manager to assist responding officers. They maintained radio contact with the officers and updated them as necessary to facilitate their response. The dispatch supervisor ensured information was being gathered and disseminated as needed, and as such, officers arrived on scene very quickly, finding a rapidly unfolding and dynamic incident. Responding officers possessing limited information regarding the location of the suspect with the rifle, deployed to the exterior of the store, and searched the parking lot for the suspect. In further attempt to locate the suspect, other officers utilized the store's camera system and located the suspect outside the store, relaying that information to the officers on the exterior. Officers immediately contacted the suspect and gave verbal commands to show her hands. The suspect repeatedly screamed, "Shoot me, and I want to die." While officers held lethal coverage on the suspect and continued to give verbal commands to keep her hands up, the suspect placed her hands in her pockets and refused to obey the officer's commands. Officers continued verbal negotiation with the suspect, and were ultimately able to take her into custody without injury to her or the officers. The entire time this took place, the suspect made statements about wanting to die and begged the officers to shoot her. Officers located a rifle outside the store, along with a knife and instruments to use to light a fire. The suspect admitted to the officers she became upset with store employees, so she went home and retrieved the weapons. The suspect said she returned to the store intent on killing employees and customers inside the store. The suspect's inability to get the rifle to operate properly caused her to hide behind the store, and she was formulating her plan, her next plan, to cause harm when confronted by the officers. Members of the investigative section were called out to assist the operations bureau with collecting evidence, interviewing the suspect, victims, and witnesses, and eventually served a search warrant on her home where additional evidence was recovered. Detectives worked throughout the day to make certain a strong case was established against the suspect in order to ensure successful prosecution for these serious crimes. The performance of the dispatchers, officers, and detectives involved in this incident were extraordinary and prevented certain tragedy. On behalf of the Prescott Police Department, I commend each of you for your collective effort in maintaining a calm demeanor, exhibiting excellent teamwork, utilizing outstanding tactics without resorting to the use of lethal force, and embracing our core values of integrity, courage, accountability, respect, and excellence. I couldn't be prouder to stand here today to recognize each of you for what you did for all of us that day. Congratulations.
Police Officer Matt Medina. Officer Dana Pauls. Dispatch Jennifer Bass. Dispatch Supervisor Vivian Mark. Dispatch Desiree Davis. Eventually, Jen. Last but not least, Detective John Hannah. I want to say that this event occurred on the day of the Christmas parade, so everybody had somewhere that they wanted to be. Some, some of these officers were getting off shift, and they, they had to rearrange their plans completely because of this event. And as I said before, I couldn't be prouder of what they did that day. You should all be proud of what these men and women were able to prevent in terms of tragedy that would have affected all of us in the city of Prescott. Thank you.
Consent agenda. Item 9A, Approval of Minutes for the Council Study Session Meeting and the Special Meeting Held on December 13th, and the Council Special Meeting Held on December 20th, 2016. Item B, Ratification of Agreement for Mandatory Court Computer Software System at Prescott Municipal Court, City Contract Number 2017-223. Item C, Approval to Permit Temporary Rock Crushing Activities Within the Lakeview Plaza Subdivision for a Duration of 90 Days. Item D, Approval of City Contract Number 2017-212 with CI Technologies Incorporated for the Purchase, Installation, Training, and Annual Maintenance of the iPro and Blue Team Public Safety Software to be Utilized by the Police Department in the Amount of $14,000. Item E, Approval of City Contract Number 2017-219 with Econolite Contract or Control Products Incorporated for the Sole Source Purchase of Two Traffic Signal Cabinets in a Total Amount Not to Exceed $19,503. Item F, Approval of Ordinance Number 5018-1556, An Ordinance of the Maron Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, Authorizing the Acceptance of a Water Utility Easement from Nazcare Incorporated, and Authorizing the Maron Count, the Maron Staff to Execute Any and All Documents to Effectuate Said Easement. And Item G, Approval of Ordinance Number 5017-1555, An Ordinance of the Maron Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, Authorizing the Acceptance of a Public Trail Easement from Michael C. McCracken, and Authorizing the Maron Staff to Execute Any and All Documents to Effectuate Said Easement.
Okay, is there a desire by the council to pull any of the items, prefer the discussion? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through G.
Okay, I have motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Regular agenda.
Item 10A, Mayor and Council, this item is, was advertised for the public hearing approval of a substantial amendment to the 2016 Annual Action Plan to real, to reallocate CDBD funds. Staff has asked that this item be continued to a later date, so they don't not want to hold discussion on this item.
Should will come up at a future voting meeting. Okay.
So Item B, Public Hearing for a Biannual Review of a Land Use Assumptions, Infrastructure Improvement Plan, and Development Fees as Required by ARS 9-4-63.05G2.
Thank you, Dana. Yes, Dana mentioned, this is the public hearing that's required by the revisions that were made to the impact fee rules. Several years ago, we adopted the new impact fee rules, about two years ago, and it requires a biannual audit of the landfill, the land usage assess assumptions, infrastructure improvement plans, and the development fee collection. The audit was done as part of our annual audit with I. Bailey, who is our independent auditor doing the overall city audit. The report was published on our website as required by the statute, and there were some, some findings during the audit. There was an issue with the computer system that was being used in the early stages of the implementation. All those situations that were discovered were corrected, and the system was fixed for going forward, and that is also a system that is scheduled to be replaced, and council has already taken action to purchase a Silla system which will be implemented there. With that, I'd be glad answering a question from council, or we can just go to public comment on the hearing.
Would you just have a comment, Mayor?
Go ahead.
So you're blaming IT?
No, I'm not. I'm blaming the setup of the system, which, you know, is a, is a group effort, so I blame us all. But the problem's been fixed.
Any other comments, questions for the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve.
Close public hearing.
Oh, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Give him a motion, a second vote, please.
Mayor, I move to.
Passes unanimously.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Dana. Mayor, I move to approve the Biannual Land Use Assumption Infrastructure Improvement Plan and Development Fees as Required by ARS 9-4-63 dash, or I'm sorry, .5G2.
Second.
Okay, motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Next item.
Item C, Award of City Contract Number 2017-216 to AJP Electric Incorporated for the Sun Dog Transfer Station Improvements Project, Phase One Electrical Improvements in the Amount of $337,770.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Steve Ors, Public Works. The item before you today is a approval of a construction contract with AJP Electric to conduct electrical upgrades, lighting upgrades, out at the transfer facility. These upgrades are needed to provide, or improve, safety of the staff and security of the facility. This involves both transfer station equipment and Streets Division equipment at the facility. Currently, a lot of the area that's where vehicles are parked is unlit, and when the need to have those vehicles start up and address issues on the street system, whether it's snow or other issues. it's snow or other issues, there's no light in the area, and it's very unsafe for people walking around trying to get to the vehicles and things. So this is quite an improvement plan for the facility and upgrades. This is a first phase of several phases of improvements that are contemplated at the transfer facility to improve operations. The plans were prepared under a design contract authorized by council. It was out to bid in November. We did have a mandatory pre-bid conference where we had two qualified contractors. We received one bid, and it was very close to the engineer's estimate. The contractors qualifications and reference checks were validated and everything seemed to be in order, so we're recommending approval of this contract. The funding of this is, comes from the Solid Waste Fund as well as the Streets Fund since both entities benefit. It was decided to split the cost of the improvements equally there, as you can see in the council memo. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, otherwise, thank you.
Councilwoman Lozelle.
Thank you, Mayor. This is not, this is more towards the city manager. Mr. City Manager, if we were choosing not to spend this $337,000, could we spend it on PSPRS?
Well, that's a softball from Hack, isn't it? No, the answer is no.
I just want to make that clear because we had somebody speak last time that we spend a lot of money on various projects, but we have, this is a dedicated source that can't pull it from this to spend it on PSPRS or any general fund project.
As Lozelle, all kidding aside, that's a good point to make. I think sometimes people looking from the outside in don't understand the breakdown of fund accounting and how money in local governments is separated out, and it is, it's, this does not fix that.
Right, we can only spend it on sewer, water, infrastructure, roads, whatever, what have.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the council? Any from the public? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to award City Contract Number 2017-216.
Second. I have a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Well, that completes our agenda for today, and since we're wrapping up so quick, I just wanted to say thank you, and I'll give you a quote next, next time. Thank you.